I have been vigilant, I guess, about this. It has not been addressed. There's others, possibly some in the room, that would say this could be. Thank goodness I'm not running for office this time. But anyhow, it will be a campaign issue for those who come to my door and others, my neighbors. And many, I've sat in those seats before. There's tough things to take care of. Is my time up? All right. Well, I sure appreciate your all's, but I do. How many times have I called, Mayor? I know you've heard.
Thank you. All right. Moving on, we have the events application for Juneteenth celebration.
Hi, and thank you for allowing me to be on the agenda today. First, I would like to invite everybody to our Juneteenth celebration at Davis Learning Center on June fifteenth. I came to request that for our celebration, that Chambers Avenue be closed from Bourbon Street to Lynn Street to accommodate our vendors for our event this year.
All right. Do I have a motion? Motion made by Mr. Allen. Second made by Mr. Stone. Other further questions and or comments? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. Those opposed say likewise. Let the record reflect that the motion passed. Thank you, Lilly. All right. Next, we have mayor comments, and like I said, I'm gonna switch gears a little bit. So I wanna bring up Senator Majority Leader Damon Thayer. If you have not realized the importance of what he has done for this county and also for the city of Georgetown. Through Georgetown Municipal Water and Sewer, we tried to, we did apply for funding. We went to Senator Thayer, and he made some things happen. And because of that, we're gonna be allocated seven million dollars for our water and sewer project. So we want to recognize him for his, not only just for Georgetown, but all he's done in his twenty-plus years being on the Senate, and he's really been an advocate for this county. So at this time, I would like to come up, if you would, Senator Thayer. And I'm gonna ask-
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Thank you for including me on your agenda tonight. As a twenty-four-year resident of Scott County and ten years now in the city limit, twenty-two years as your state senator, it's a privilege to come before our city's governing body. We did have a very successful session where I was able to get included at the eleventh hour. Actually, it was about the twenty-third and a half hour, if you really wanna know the truth. Seven million dollars to Georgetown Municipal Water and Sewer Services for water and sewer upgrades. We know this is one of the biggest issues that local government wrestles with here in a growing county. And every citizen, whether you live in rural Scott County or in densely populated Cherry Blossom like I do, this is an important issue for us. And as we continue to grow, we're the fastest-growing county in Kentucky. Bullock County likes to claim that from time to time, but I will arm wrestle them to the ground and say that we are number one. And, you know, pretty soon, we're probably gonna pass Richmond in population, the way things are going. And we have to have the infrastructure. We have to have the infrastructure in order to accommodate the increase in citizens. We've gotta have the road infrastructure. We've gotta have water and sewer. And so we were able to do that during this, my last session as your state senator. This follows up the monies we were able to achieve two years ago when I was last before this council to present another big check. So I'm happy to be back tonight, and hopefully, this will allow, knock on metal, but no more increases in our water and sewer rates. The way I look at it is Scott County is a growing county. We send a lot of taxes to Frankfurt, and this is part of getting our share back as an investment in our situation here. You know, I know, I know the challenges that you all deal with in growth at the local level, but I wanna tell you, from my perspective in Frankfurt, there is a lot of jealousy and wish they were more like us, coming from other communities around the state. When you think about the communities where people were born and raised, and now they're moving to Georgetown because the jobs are here, because the roads are here, because they know that they can get good, clean drinking water, that they know there are gonna be good wastewater services, we're in a pretty sweet spot right now. And I hope you'll all continue to make the decisions necessary to keep us there. We're in a really good spot. There are literally hundreds of communities around this Commonwealth who would love to have a tenth of the problems that, let's call them challenges, not problems, call them challenges, that a city like ours has to deal with when it comes to growth. And so my hat's off to you for the local decision-making that you have to make. Mr. Mayor, just a little background on how this came about. I received a letter in mid-March from Judge Executive Joe Pat Covington when we were literally in last-minute Free Conference Committee. I'm on that committee as a member of Senate Leadership. As they say in the musical Hamilton, I'm in the room where it happened. And Judge Covington forwarded me a letter from Chase Aceavito asking if we could try to get this funding in at the last minute for continual, continued wastewater and water improvements here. It's not a hard case to make. My colleagues understand the growth that's happening here, the jobs that are being created here, the jobs that are being sustained here. They understand the necessity, but it was a bit of a challenge. It came in at the last minute, and, you know, when you're dealing with a multi-billion, fifteen-billion-dollar annual budget, and we had a pretty good surplus this year. And so I don't know what's harder, trying to decide what to cut when times are lean or trying to decide what to spend when times are flush. But thanks to the tax policy we've enacted since 2017, our general fund is in really good shape. So we, we made a decision first to put enough of the money away to trigger a fourth cut in the personal income tax. So by this time, two years from now, when I will no longer be your senator, you will probably get another cut in the personal income tax rate. It's down to four percent, when it was six percent for generations. We're looking at heading down to three and a half percent about twenty months from now. And then, then we still had, even once we had the money left in the Budget Reserve Trust to make sure we hit the tax cut triggers in less than two years, we still had a significant amount of money to spend on infrastructure like this. So in addition to the road dollars that you may have heard about, the money for the Kentucky Horse Park, thirty-nine million dollars, which has a very positive effect on Georgetown, we were able to get seven million dollars in the budget for the city of Georgetown through the Water and Sewer Board. I know there are several members of the board here tonight. I'd like to see if Chase could come up and maybe speak about this a bit, because he was the one who put together the letter that I circulated to members of the Free Conference Committee to help me make the case for this money. It's not an insignificant amount of money. There are cities across this Commonwealth that are happy when they get three hundred thousand dollars. So this is, of course, proportional to our population and our growth needs. So Chase, if you could, and then if we could do a photo op.
Well, before we do that, Senator, we're gonna do a proclamation before we do all that, okay?
Okay.
All right. So Madam Clerk, if you read the proclamation, please.
A proclamation about the city of Georgetown and Georgetown Municipal Water and Sewer Services in recognition of the efforts of Senator Damon Thayer in securing vital funding for water and sanitary sewer infrastructure projects that will greatly benefit customers in Georgetown and Scott County. Whereas utility services satisfy basic needs for customers of the unit, they improve quality of life in the community. Availability, affordable, and reliable utility infrastructure stimulates and sustains economic growth. Without well-made utility infrastructure, economic viability and community sustainability are greatly impaired. And whereas Georgetown and Scott County stand as vital pillars of central Kentucky, serving as key population centers, economic drivers, and employment hubs. And whereas GMWSS maintains competitive rates while providing outstanding service to its customers, additionally, GMWS is dedicated to protecting the public's safety, health, and welfare, improving and protecting quality of life for residents and businesses located in Georgetown and Scott County, ensuring regulatory compliance, fostering sustainable growth, and facilitating economic development throughout Scott County. And whereas GMWSS relies exclusively on user rates built into the approved rate structure provided in taxes to finance capital improvement projects and infrastructure renewal. And whereas GMWSS is committed to maintaining a rate structure that minimizes adverse impacts on its customers, and whereas Senator Thayer, alongside members of the state legislature, will diligently secure seven million dollars in House Bill Number One for these projects, aware as the fundamental support of development and implementation of twelve previously unfunded capital improvement projects. And whereas funding through this special allocation in the state budget will greatly benefit the burn on rate pay that is crucial to the success of the public utility, now therefore the Georgetown City Council and the GMWSS Board of Commissioners on the thirteenth day of May, 2024, on behalf of GMWSS and its customers, do hereby commend Senator Thayer on his efforts in funding these projects and express sincere gratitude for his continued support of GMWSS.
Thank you.
I will let Chase to come up and do, come on, Chase, you wanna say it quick?
I will be very brief and redundant at this point. Thank you, Mayor. On behalf of Georgetown Municipal, I'm grateful to be here tonight to celebrate at this podium and express our gratitude, Senator Thayer. Thank you for your support, your dedication, your work funding this, for this funding through the state legislature for Georgetown Municipal. I'd also be remiss, Mayor, if I didn't recognize you as well as Judge Covington in this effort for your continued support of Georgetown Municipal and going after this council, this administration, going after funding, as we know that budgets are difficult, and not just for water and wastewater, but for services across the board that benefit our citizens. So I'm also thank the board members that could be here, and I know they echo my appreciation. So as already discussed, we're no stranger to the benefits of Senator Thayer and the state legislature's hard work. We're announcing today, it builds on, as he said, five million dollars for the Southside Water Tank and Distribution System Improvements that was awarded, that funding in the previous budget, and we're in planning, we're in design for that project that is going to provide increased water storage and distribution system improvements that will improve our level of service for our customers with their homes, also improve fire protection and that regulatory requirement for more water storage. So very excited about that, but now we can, we can shift our focus to this new funding. And I'm hesitant to do it, but I'll take you back to the first quarter of 2023. New administration members and new mayor and you all, I applaud you that you so quickly got up to speed on a very, very difficult issue with the redesign of our wastewater treatment plan upgrade and expansion, our largest capital project in our utilities history. And this administration, this council stepped up to the plate in a very quick and a very big way, and it was just such an extremely unfortunate set of circumstances. It did result in a rate increase. I apologize again, but that's the way that we had to move forward. We didn't invite that, we didn't want that, but we had to move forward. And as a result of that, as I stood at the podium in how many meetings, I said, I promise that we will seek out every bit of grant funding. We will, any opportunity that we hear about, we will chase it, chase after it, chase it down. So earlier this spring, as Senator Thayer detailed, with my lack of knowledge on the timing of the budget process, I apologize. But a few of our board members said, hey, Senator Thayer's helped us in the past, why not ask? And we met with Mayor Jenkins, we met with Judge Covington, and they agreed, why not ask? And as he said, you know, some would be thrilled with a much smaller amount. We swung a big bang. We were swinging for the fences with this request, and we asked for seven million dollars. We would've been happy with, you know, fifty dollars. And Senator Thayer and his colleagues, they made it happen, and they funded a full seven million dollars that will fund twelve projects that you will see coming very soon in our fiscal year twenty-five budget that we hope to present to you June tenth. So these projects, kind of briefly mentioned, deal with ongoing regulatory compliance, maintaining that in an ever-changing regulatory compliance universe that we live. Forever chemicals, lead and copper, these are things that we're dealing with, that everyone is dealing with, coming down from the EPA level. Infrastructure renewal, every utility across the country, we're facing it, and it's not just water and sewer, it's our roads, it's everything. It's difficult, and it doesn't happen without these types of efforts. So to Senator Thayer, to the mayor, to Judge Covington, on behalf of the board and staff, I extend our sincere appreciation. It's with this team, you know, we have this shared mention, we wanna deliver excellent service, and we wanna do it at the most affordable way possible, and it's vital to the prosperity of our community. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Again, I wanna thank City Clerk Hoffman for the excellent reading of the proclamation. I appreciate that. One of the reasons we were able to get this done and done quickly at the last minute was because Chase's detailed explanation of each project made it easy for me to sell. And there are a couple people who, if you see them, you should thank them. Our Senator Chris McDaniel, the chairman of our Budget Committee from Kenton County, I sold him on this really quickly, and he helped me usher it through the process. And then someone you all may know, one of our new members, Senator Amanda Mays Bledsoe from Lexington. She's former city council member in Lexington. She was chair of the Budget Committee for the city of Lexington, and she's now vice chair of our Budget Committee. And she also was an advocate for this, because she, as a former city councilperson, understands the infrastructure needs of cities. So if you ever see those around, those two people around, please thank them. Judge Covington was on me every day, asking me to get it in the budget, and I appreciate his persistence. And I just wanna say, I'm really grateful for the proclamation. That's very kind, very generous. You may have heard I'm not running for reelection this year, and I just wanna say in public in front of this council that serving as Georgetown State Senator for the last twenty-two years has been one of the highest honors and privileges of my life, and it will, something I always look back with a great deal of gratitude for being sent down to Frankfurt to be the senator from Scott. I'm still gonna be around, still gonna be a citizen of Georgetown, and so you'll still see me around. I'm gonna continue working hard until New Year's Eve, and then at midnight, I become Citizen Thayer. So thanks for everything, and I really appreciate the time.
Thank you. All right. Do some more mayor's comment. Just wanna give a couple updates on some items. We have gotten a new grant administrator. Her name is Karen Leverance, and I sent you counsel her resume, and she's gonna be a vital, important piece for getting funding for us. So she will start on June the seventeenth, and then she will hit the ground running. Want to remind you that next Monday is a special call council meeting, and the reason for that, remember, is that our regular scheduled meeting, which was the twenty-seventh, is on Memorial Day holiday, so that is the reason why we had to switch that out. On June fourth, at eleven-thirty at Georgetown's First United Methodist, this council is invited. We have the Scott County Distinguished Citizens Award Luncheon, and that we always in the past have sponsored a table, and so if you want to attend, please email Wendy, my executive assistant, and she will get you signed up. And hats off to Georgetown College. If you have not heard the announcement of them getting twenty-eight million dollars in donation funding, that's a big feat to get them out of debt. We're going to recognize President Allen at a later date, and we'll let the council know and put that on the schedule. And for some odd reason, they asked me to be the commencement speaker for this coming week for graduation. I don't know, maybe I was the last straw in the hat, but anyway, that's what I'm doing, and the invitation is open to council if they wanna come to that also. All right. Moving on, next we have the presentation of the compensation study. We have with us Dr. Russell Campbell, Management Advisory Group, Co-letters Mag.
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate the introduction, fellow members of council. Over the past three, four months, we've been working on developing a new compensation system for the city. And so what I'd like to do tonight is to share with you the methodology, the approach, the findings and recommendations of that study. I think it went well, got lots of input and support from all the employees of the city. I did not know tonight was bring a check to the meeting. I was certainly brought a check for seven million and one dollar, just so I didn't feel left out. But I'm not empty-handed. I do have something for you. I assume there's a lot of UK Big Blue supporters in here. Last week, I was down in Arkansas, and I just want you to know Coach Cal sends his regards. With that said, just a brief introduction of the company, Management Advisory Group. We're headquartered out of Fairfax, Virginia. We've been in business for over twenty-five years. We've done over six hundred of these type projects for government around the country. One hundred percent of our client base is government, city, county, school districts, special purpose districts, as well as public safety organizations. I personally have done over three hundred. My background is a former Air Force officer who started in local government as HR director, and I've also been a deputy city manager. We've got a lot of experience here in the area. We just completed the most recent study for Louisville-Jefferson County, which is the first one they've had in over twenty-five years that was completed and implemented. And we also completed shortly thereafter a study for Lexington-Fayette, which was also implemented. And so with that said, I have a few PowerPoint slides I'd like to go through. The gentleman in the back there in IT has graciously agreed to forward the slides for him. Go to the next one, please. I think it's important to understand what the study was not designed to look at, as well as what it was intended to address as a part of the request and proposal that was sent out by the city. In terms of specific items or actions we were supposed to address, we were supposed to look at all the positions that make up city government and document and validate what the duties and responsibilities and qualifications were for each one of those positions. And we were able to do that by reviewing and assessing the existing job descriptions, which were updated and well-kept by the city. And then the second bullet there is one of two tenants you have to address when you're in this business of designing compensation systems. It doesn't matter whether it's Management Advisory Group or me as a consultant. You first got to establish the internal relationship of the jobs that are under study in the organization you're working for. And what do I mean by that? Jobs should be paid based on the level of responsibility, as well as the credentials or qualifications for that position. Otherwise, we just pay everyone on a very elongated salary scale, and everyone would have to fall on that scale at some point in time. If we did that, we would overpay for some jobs and underpay for others. So we've got to establish the value in terms of priority ranking of the jobs within this organization. And so we have a fourteen-point criteria we use to analyze and evaluate each position, and I'm gonna share that criteria with you shortly. But we go through and we analyze each position, and then we're able to print a report that shows us what's the most complex job in the organization, and then in descending order, what is considered the least complex job in the organization. Now, you don't have to be a consultant to figure out that the most complex job is probably gonna be the highest level of leadership position that's included in the study. The lowest or least complex position is probably gonna be a job that has a lot of labor-related activities associated with it, or an entry-level clerical position. But how those other jobs shake out in the middle is where this process gives the city a defensible mechanism to justify the different levels of pay associated with the positions. And so we've established the internal equity relationship in the city. Number three, in terms of market adjustments and reviewing the labor market, the regional labor market. We came up with a list of organizations, primarily municipalities, that we thought the city of Georgetown needed to compete with, because you're all fishing from the same dock and to the same lake for the same type of skillset and labor. And so this is what we call the external equity component, where we're looking to find out what these other organizations are carrying in terms of value of their positions from a monetary perspective. Please understand, we're not trying to collect salary information on what incumbents are making in these other jurisdictions. Statistically, we could not attach a high confidence level to the data based on actual salaries, because they would be driven by how long the person has been with the organization, how long they've been in that position, what their credentials were, where they started within the pay schedule. So we're collecting information from the midpoint of the other organization's pay schedule, and we're aggregately summarizing or averaging that information, and it goes into a computer program along with the individual point score that's associated with the internal equity. And then using a statistical modeling technique called linear regression, we're able to create the new pay structure. So it's nothing that is done manually. It is all driven by a software application with specific algorithms designed to develop pay structures. So those two tenants are internal equity, which is ranking the jobs in this organization in the study, external equity, identifying those cities or other organizations that are competing for the same type of labor, and then using some type of statistical process to link it all together, so it has meaning. And then, of course, we looked at making sure that we came up with an implementation plan that was affordable, because when we come into an organization, we do these type of studies. The goal is to try to get the study implemented so it can be approved and in effect for the start of the next fiscal year. In some cases, where the organization has limited resources and they are so far behind the marketplace, we have to structure a multi-year phase-in. Generally, if you have to phase it in, you don't wanna do more than three years to phase it in, because by the time you reach the third year, there could be internal changes, restructuring in departments, people can come and go, new people come in, mandates from the state or the federal government can come in and impact some job titles or classifications. And then certainly, the economy as a whole could be different three years down the road. And then certainly, there could be a different makeup on the council. And so we always try to make sure that if we can't get it implemented within the next fiscal year, that we come up with a two or maybe even a three-year implementation. And then the final thing, in terms of what this process is designed to do, is to give you a framework, a structure. So going forward, if existing jobs need to be reclassified because someone has taken on additional duties or responsibility, or duties have been taken away, that job can easily be slotted into the structure that we've developed. Also, if you create new positions, our system will accommodate new positions based on the same criteria that we used to create the original study. Ideally speaking, you shouldn't have to do this, but every three to five years. Best practice says five years, but over the last couple of years, we're seeing more and more municipal and county governments deciding to do this every three or four years. years, because the labor market has been pretty strong, and there's a lot of competition for labor. And so organizations have been doing it a little sooner than they typically would. But five years is considered best practices. Next slide, please. So, what we did not look at as a part of this study is identifying staffing levels. We did not make any comments or recommendations with that respect. I do point out that this is a growing community and a growing city, and at some point in time, you probably need to look to make sure that in anticipation of the growth going forward, that departments are properly staffed to meet the demand of services that will certainly follow. We did not make any recommendations to reorganize or restructure some departments or functions, but I can tell you, as someone who has expertise in organizational development, I did identify some opportunities where maybe some efficiencies could be achieved by maybe allocating some functions into another area. And probably the biggest thing that I want to drive home off of this particular slide is that this process has absolutely nothing to do with performance or anything attributable to performance. This is about the value of the job, not the value of the person. The value of the person should be addressed based on their performance review, which usually takes place on an annual basis. So, it doesn't matter who currently holds the position today, or who would hold the position tomorrow, or six months down the road. It's the value of the position. Labor is a commodity, driven by the same principles of supply and demand as gasoline or orange juice. And so what someone is willing, in terms of an organization's willing to pay for your skill, expertise, and experience, is derived in the form of a salary. We did not make any commitments in terms of guaranteeing anyone any salary increases at all, and we certainly did not recommend reducing anyone's pay. Even if we found someone who was over the top end or the maximum that we came back with, we would not recommend reducing their pay. There would be other administrative ways to address that. Next slide, please. So, study goals and objectives. We looked at all positions that were associated with the existing compensation classification plan. We looked at the labor market, and I'm going to show you and share with you the specific entities that we compared you to. One of the things that we did find, we found two things that stood out. Number one, over time, as some jobs have been reclassified and adjusted based on changes in duty composition, there were some issues where there were some jobs that were grouped together that maybe one or two in that group was, should be functioning at a higher level from a pay standpoint. And then we found what we call salary compression, where you have a fair number of employees with varying years of tenure, but they are all kind of clustered together in terms of salary. And so we wanted to address those two things as part of the study. And then we wanted to make sure overall, you have a very competitive classification and compensation structure. Based on the results of the study that we've put together, no job within the city, whether it be full-time or part-time, will pay less than $17.18 per hour. Now, keep in mind, local governments around the country are under pressure with respect to compensation, because retail, the big box stores like Walmart and Target, they're paying anywhere between $15 and $20 an hour. Fast food establishments have also raised salaries up above $15 per hour. And so the old adage used to be, well, you go to government, they may not pay as well as the private sector, but you've got some great benefits. That is kind of fallen by the wayside. In my generation, that was important, and I'm sure it was for most of you. But as the baby boomers exit out of the labor market, and we have a younger contingent of folks that are coming into the labor market, many of them strapped with, you know, tens of thousands of dollars of student loan debt, they're more concerned about what my take-home check's going to look like. I can't worry about whether or not I'm going to get sick 10 years from now or 15 years from now. I know I need to have that check, because I've got to service that debt. And so it's really changing fundamentally how we recruit and retain within local government. The other thing we wanted to do was make sure that we had policies to support the new compensation system that we designed. No matter how well it was designed and put together, if you don't have policies so that Fair Labor Standards Act designations. And there, I'm talking about which jobs are classified as exempt and non-exempt for the purposes of overtime pay. Now, the rules are going to change July 1st. The rules in FLSA are based on annual salary. Right now, the annual salary threshold is just under $35,000 annually. In other words, if someone makes less than $35,000 now, they're automatically considered exempt. Starting July 1, that threshold goes up to about $44,000. So, anyone making less than 44,000 would be considered a non-exempt employee. So, we went through and we did the analysis based on the upcoming rule change, and there was only one or two positions that come to mind that needed some adjustment. The record-keeping has been really good in your human resources department. Next slide, please. Just briefly, the methodology, we used existing job descriptions. We talked with HR about historical information regarding recruitment and retention. We met individually with the department heads to talk about specific recruitment or retention issues in their department, or any restructuring that they may be considering bringing before council. We also met with the leadership team, HR, finance, the chief administrative officer, to discuss their perspectives as it relates to compensation classification. And then, as I said, we gathered information from other jurisdictions, and we wanted to make sure that all the recommendations reflect the nature of the work that was being done. I talked about the policies or administrative guidelines that we've created, and then, of course, we've calculated the cost of transition from the old plan over to the new plan. Next slide, please. Everything we do is done in a software application called Classification Manager. Some companies in this business use Excel with pre-populated formulas to drive where the jobs are going to be placed and how the regression analysis takes place. We have an access-derived database that is designed specifically for creating different job structures within an organization. We can do school systems, cities, counties, special purpose districts, and we could do private sector if we were asked to with this application. Next slide. I talked about the criteria we use to evaluate the jobs to determine what grade they're going to be assigned to. That criteria is known as job factors, and these factors are universal. They will apply to any job, whether it's an exempt, non-exempt, leadership position, non-leadership. And I'll start off with the first one being data responsibility. And what are we talking about when we say data responsibility? Here, we're basically looking at the different types of records, reports, and documents that the employees either review or produce in their current job capacity to determine the complexity of those documents. We look at judgment. Once we see the job tasks that are associated with a given position, we're able to make some connotation with respect to how judgment is employed, as well as decision-making within that current position. People responsibility, looking at the different levels of what we call supervision. There's primary supervision, which is someone can approve time off, take the lead on disciplinary action. Then there's a second tier of supervision, known as coordination, where someone has been delegated responsibility to oversee others from their director or supervisor. And then we have what we call team leaders, which typically are in like public works or some of the operational departments, where they're typically assigned for monitoring the work of a crew or a small team. And then we have the fourth level, which is just being an employee responsible for no one but yourself. You don't have any responsibility for monitoring or being a part of someone else's responsibility to complete a task. And so then we go into complexity of work, which ties back to the data that they work with. Asset responsibility, whether it be responsible for a budget, or being able to commit expenditures on behalf of the organization, or being accountable in terms of the custodian of equipment or materials, and we are able to ascertain a value for those things. Impacted decisions. If an employee exercises poor decision-making or poor judgment, what's the blowback from that? Could someone get hurt, whether it be an employee or a citizen, or could there be some type of legal exposure to the city? Education experience. We're looking to make sure that what has been identified in terms of education experience is reasonable in terms of today's labor market. They're not overembellished, or they're not undersold with respect to education experience. We look at equipment, any physical requirements, communication, who the employees are interacting with internally and externally to do that job, any math or statistic, statistical analysis associated with it. Unaviable hazards. This is where we're talking about in some jobs, particularly police and fire, the employees are exposed to certain hazards that could cause them bodily harm. The greater that exposure, the greater the value of those positions are to the organization. And of course, we have safety of others. Everyone bears some responsibility for safety in the organization, depending on where they fall in the organizational chain of command. And so as I go through as a consultant, and I assign a rating score that ranges from 1 to 10 in each one of those categories, based on my grading manual, I then can print that report I told you about to show the internal relationship. The most complex job will be the highest quantitative score in position, and then in ascending order will be all the other jobs, all the way down to the job that had the least or lowest quantitative point score. Next slide, please. Here are the organizations that we collected data from. Paducah, Henderson, Frankfurt, Nicholasville, Elizabeth Town, Florence, Richmond, Covington, Orangeboro, Bowling Green, Lexington-Fayette, Louisville-Jefferson County, Hoskinville. And we did have access to information from the county as well with respect to their pay structures. And then where it says on net, that is where we're able to look at the private sector and see what's being paid for jobs that exist in the private sector, as they do in the City of Georgetown government. For the government entities, we can contact them directly, and Kentucky's no different than other states in the Union, where certain information is deemed public, public information that can be assessed by any citizen. Salary structures, organizational charts, and job descriptions are considered public documents. So, we don't have a problem getting that from governmental entities. Unfortunately, that does not apply to the private sector. And so if you call Google or Amazon and ask them what they're paying shippers or drivers, if you can get somebody even to answer the phone, it's going to be a very stern, no, we don't provide that information. But there's a secondary source to collect that information. So, we go through the Federal Department of Labor, Bureau of Labor Statistics, where there's about 3,000 people, and all they do is collect statistical data on the economy and the labor market, and wages, and salaries, and benefits. And so that is where we collect information respective with what's being paid for similar jobs in the private sector. Next slide, please. So, what did the market data tell us? There was a bit of conundrum here in terms of the city. I hadn't seen this in a while. In terms of your pay structures, and when we talk about pay structure, it has three components. A minimum, which is entry-level, which typically is someone who just meets the stated requirements of the job description. Then you have the midpoint, which is considered the prevailing rate of pay for someone who's fully qualified, they've completed their learning curve, and this is where the market says they should be. And then we have the maximum value for a position at a given point in time. Now, you'll notice that we have negatives at all three junctures of the salary range. Anytime we see a negative greater than 5%, that tells us that there is probably some presence of recruitment or retention difficulty within the organization. So, if you just looked at this, you'd say, wow, the city's not in great shape. But the odd thing is, when I, because I did have some information on what actual salaries are in the region, what's actually being paid to employees is pretty good. It's just your pay structure, that's the problem. So, what kind of problems is it creating? When you post jobs, because the salary ranges are so low, a lot of qualified people aren't going to apply, or haven't been applying. Even though you may say, based on experience and you really negotiate, the gap is so large, because it's greater than negative 5%, they figure you're not going to negotiate to that extent. So, they just don't apply. So, you're missing out on some talented people, because they see the pay structure and say it's just too low. And so that was the greatest challenge in this organization, is to get the pay structures to where that they're competitive. Now, when we looked at the pay structure of the other organizations, in terms of the spread from the minimum to the max, we found on average, it was about 49.5% spread from minimum to max in the other organizations we looked at, and the current city spread is about 58%. So, not bad there at all. But it was eye-popping to see that the ranges were so far off, but actual salaries of the employees within those jobs were actually better off than we thought. Next slide. So, what do we do in terms of putting together a structure? One of the things I recommend, based on the size of the organization, is go to a step and grade program. Now, if any of you've worked in a school district, where you see steps associated with jobs, anywhere in America, if you go to a school district and you look at that math teacher, and that math teacher tells you, here, she's been there 17 years, you pull out their pay schedule, and you go down to step 17, grade 10, you find out what their salary are. We use step and grade in local government, not to the extent that it ties directly to someone's experience. We use it more as an administrative tool, so that employees have a mechanism to move forward within the pay structure. Okay? And so we created two separate pay plans within this organization, but they were all derived from the same statistical tree. The first one is known as the Unified Plan. There are 56 titles in that plan, and there's 21 steps, and there's 2.4 increments in between steps, and the spread or width from the minimum, which is step 1, and the maximum, which is step 21, is 60%. Then we have the Public Safety Plan, which is fire and police, 17 titles, step plan with 21 steps. The increment is a little bit different, it's 2.2. That's because you'll notice the spread is 55% rather than 60%. Typically, you're going to find a spread in the public safety arena a little shorter or more narrow than you will for general government positions. One of the reasons we created a separate pay structure for public safety, because those jobs are moving in the marketplace faster than non-public safety positions. If there were ever any group of organizations that needed a PR person, it would be public safety, police, and fire EMS. A lot of folks, bad press, the challenges of the job, frustration with the legal system, are walking away, either retiring or going to another career. So, everyone's trying to recruit, and what do we do when we can't fill positions? We throw more money at. That isn't always the panacea. Sometimes it's bad management, to be quite frank, but pay does make a difference for a lot of people. And so as the market continues to evolve with public safety, if you need to make some adjustments to make sure that you're maintaining your presence in the marketplace, you can adjust the public safety scale without impacting all the other jobs in the city. And so that's why we put them on a separate scale. Next slide, please. And so when we initially do it, it looks pretty much like this. You have the grades on the left side, and then as you move to the right, you'll see the proposed job title. And we did have instances where we recommended changing a couple of titles, just maybe three or four, because when we look at the duties and responsibilities, the existing title didn't reflect what you find in today's labor market. So, there was a couple of those. But then you'll see, we break down the salary in those three components, a minimum, a mid, and a max, and then we break it down on an hourly rate. And in order to create the step schedule, next slide, we take those minimums, midpoints, and max, and we elongate them into 21 steps. We break them up, and as I said, on the unified scale, the increment in between steps, if you go from step 1 to 2 to 3, all the way up to 21, the difference in between is 2.4%. And on the public safety, it's 2.2%. And so each year, once council decides what it wants to do in terms of employee pay increases, whether you call it a general increase or cost of living adjustment, and I'm going to give you this example here. Let's say we're looking at the unified pay table, and there's 2.4 increment in between the steps. And let's say council says for fiscal year '25-'26, we're going to give everybody a 4% quota. Well, we already know there's 2.4% in between steps, right? So, we'll just add 1.6% to the whole table, and then move the employee forward one step, and they get the 4% increase. So, it's easy to budget, it's easy to administer, it does provide the employees with some sense of security, when they can see how their salary's going to progress, if they want to make this a career, particularly in public safety. And I think that can be said for the non-public safety jobs as well, so that you can see how the salaries are going to progress over time. Now, in lean years, where money's tight and resources won't allow increase, you just freeze. You wouldn't do anything. But let's hope that doesn't, you know, that's not on the horizon anytime soon. Next slide, please. So, the number you see there, $1,095,828, includes giving every employee a 4% cost of living adjustment. Okay? That 4% is already built in there. Now, inflation Now, inflation is running anywhere from three and a half to four, depending on where you live, a little over four i- if you're in some of the, the, the really large metropolitan areas. And so, one of the things we wanted to do is make sure that we came up with a COLA where employees are able to maintain their purchasing power. All right? If you go to public supermarket this afternoon and you have a hundred bucks and you can buy twenty items, under the theory of a COLA, you should be able to do that next year by the same, you know, number of items, and your salary should be index to the increase in cost so that you can afford those same twenty items. And so, in order to implement the study, as we've developed it, it's going to cost a million ninety-five eight-two-eight. That does not include the benefit cost, that has to be added on top of it. It changes payroll by about nine percent, which is, which is pretty good initially. I know, I was talking with Devin and Megan and Stacy, they were thinking you were probably going to see something like one point six, one, one point seven million. But you were not as in better shape as, as some may have thought. So, we're coming in at, at just over a million dollars for an organization this size, that, that, that's not too bad. Next, next slide. So, in addition to the study, we also provided some, some written guidance in some other areas for future consideration. We provided some information on, on different types of employee incentives in terms of, of trying to maximize morale within the organization. It is becoming more and more common in the public sector to get leadership competent people, director level and above, that you do more than just pay them a salary and benefits. You provide them with some additional incentives, maybe additional vacation time or, or some increase based on their performance, much like the private sector. And so, that's becoming more and more prevalent in the public sector. So, we provided some, some ideas and thoughts on what we typically see in government when it comes to leadership incentives. We also provided some information on a longevity-based retention concept. You know, I was in Texas about three months ago, and like you were doing here, you had some homework things that needed to be cleaned up before I actually got up to speak, and they were recognized a thirty-five-year employee. And this gentleman, he strolled up to the podium, and the city manager and, and the mayor, they all greeted him. They gave him a, a certificate, a coffee mug, and a pen for thirty-five years of service. And I said to the HR director, I said, no disrespect intended, but I think you could have done a little bit better than that. You know, so those are things that, that, that you should think about because you've had employees who've been here through one major incident after another where it was COVID or storms, tornadoes, this is a pretty known tornado alley, and, and they've been here time and time again. When you call them, they come out. There's something to be said about institutional knowledge. And people think, particularly when I go and talk to council where I've got some people that have worked in the private sector, and, and they want to say, oh, government should work like the private sector. No, it shouldn't, because if it did, people would get, a lot of people would get the raw end of the stick, because private sector is about making money. And we don't care if you've got an illness, we're not concerned about, you know, you may not be able to make your mortgage payment, it's just about the bottom line. And so, no government will never run like a business. And believe me, if you really looked into it, you wouldn't want it to. And so, you've invested in people that are here, you've trained them. If you don't hold on to them, you in a geographic area where there's a lot of competition, you've got the metro areas of Lexington and, and Louisville, you've got a major manufacturing facility in Toyota, and so, you're best served to hold on to the people that you have. Because anytime someone leaves, that means that function that they were primarily, primarily responsible for is not going to be done to the degree that it should. Whoever's filling in, they're just going to do the bare minimum because they already got another job. So, you don't want to be the training ground for the other cities and counties in the region. And we also provided a policy on educational incentive for degrees. Typically, I, I see this a lot in public safety, police and/or fire, you know, you get a degree, there's, there's, there's some type of monetary value attached to it. I always say to those organizations that can't afford it, whether you're a police officer or a firefighter, or working in the city clerk's office, or you work in HR finance, anytime you can increase your level of education, your employee's going to benefit from that in one way, shape, or form. So, that's always a good thing. And then in terms of certification and licensure, you know, some of those jobs may not require a formal degree, but there's an opportunity to get a, a formal certification or, or some type of license. And if it benefits the employer, the city, then that's something that you should consider incentivizing. I'm not saying you're going to pay someone that works in finance who gets a bachelor's degree in zoology. I mean, that's not going to benefit the city because you don't operate a zoo. But if somebody works in finance and they came in as a junior accountant and now they got a CPA, that helps you. All right? Next slide. So, a couple of more anecdotal things, and then I'll certainly open up for questions. When we looked out into the market pace, we found that the pay for, uh, police particularly was very, very good. You're, you're kind of at the upper end of, of, of the market there. One of the things that I noticed when I was putting this together is that you had parity between police and fire. Now, if you look out in the marketplace traditionally, purely based on market conditions, typically police generally make more than fire. But about fifty percent of the organizations we work for strive for parity between the two, because you don't want to do anything that's divisive and have one group feeling that they're not appreciated to the same extent of the other. And to that extent, I, I argue that the city couldn't function without any of the departments or any of its people. It takes everyone to make the city go and operate to the degree that it should. So, I maintain that pa- parity within the structure. It only costs a couple of thousand bucks, not very much at all, so that you continue to do that and, and, and move forward in the marketplace with that perspective. The city, this is just, I think, a really good place to work, and I've seen some, some places that are not. And I wouldn't hesitate to recommend the city to anybody as a, a place of employment. And this is coming from somebody who spent a year and a half working for the city of Louisville and, and a year working for Lexington. So, this is a good environment. I just think we need to get that pay structure and get the pay to where you're around that seventy-fifth percentile. Research shows that if we can get you to that seventy-fifth percentile and your benefits are really competitive, you become an employee of choice. You're not begging people to come work here, people are beating down your door to come work here. And so, this puts you right around that seventy-fifth percentile, and your benefits package is pretty good. And so, all things being considered, this positions the city in a strong place to continue to move forward, anticipation of a lot of growth and economic development and new residents going forward. And, and so, my last comment is, I hope that when the time comes to decide how to handle this, that you will vote enthusiastically to approve the study and, and, and fund it for July one of the start of the new fiscal year. I, I certainly can entertain some questions if there are any.
I have a few questions. You said that it should be updated every three to five years.
Yes, sir.
Is that updated based on external support or is that internal?
I have no doubt that the HR and finance and administrative folks could put together a pay plan similar to what we did, but they don't have the software that we have. But one of the reasons you bring in someone from the outside is objectivity. I don't work with these people every day, I'm not buddies, I don't hunt, I don't fish, I don't drink with them, I have no relatives here. I am totally unbiased. The numbers are going to speak for what they are. And so, that's probably the biggest benefit from having someone from the outside to come in and do the study. There are some that try to do it internally, and you can, and some do, do a pretty good job. But what you gain in credibility from having someone who does this for a living versus someone doing in-house, I, I think makes it worthwhile.
More questions? So, the study's been done, looks to go into effect July first. What happens August first if Public Works has some additional equipment that they bring in that this study hasn't been evaluated on?
Well, one of the things that we need, we need to focus on, and we're talking about reclassification, where the nature of the job changes. I would argue that in a typical city government or county government, eighty percent of the so-called reclasses are just in the round to try to find a pay raise for somebody. The needle and the, and the bar is pretty high to reclassify a job. People think volume of work drives reclassification. Let's say I'm an administrative assistant to the mayor. Typically, in a week, I produce twenty administrative forms or documents, letters, what have you. Because there's, you know, special program or, 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 uh, plan or whatever that the mayor is instituting and council has supported, that, that volume of administrative support increases from twenty documents to forty. Does that mean my job need to go up in grade? No, that's a performance issue, because the volume of the work increased, but the complexity of the work stays the same. I'm still doing administrative work. So, the bar is high for a reclassification request. So, simply adding new, uh, uh, equipment, unless it's some really extensive equipment, particularly that has, uh, uh, some, uh, uh, computer type or internet or, or something of that line, maybe, but if you're just going from a piece of light equipment to a piece of heavy equipment, the range is broad enough to where if we wanted to adjust somebody, we could, without having to help the job regrade it.
Last question I have, can you talk a little bit more about complexity of work as one of your fourteen points back there?
Mm-hmm. Complexity of the work, we're looking at things of the technical nature of the job. For example, a job that works in a planning department where you're reviewing and approving plans, you're doing plan review, is a much more technical process than someone who works in the animal control department taking incident reports. So, we're looking at the technical nature of the job in terms of what type of background and experience would someone need to be able to do that? What type of formal education or certification would they need to do that work? That defines or determines what the complexity is of a given job.
Thank you.
Okay, go ahead.
Thank you for that presentation, very interesting.
Oh, your mic on?
Oh, now it is on, suddenly. Wow, thank you. Do you have an idea of how many cities, maybe even of our size, adopt the compensation studies that are brought to them? And if so, is there a way to evaluate the increase in retention or productivity based on the fact that they didn't, in fact, adopt this? Because this will be a big decision to make for the council, and I just wonder if there's that out there that...
I, I can tell you on our experience, we do about sixty to seventy of these a year, and we've done over six hundred in our existence. In terms of whether or not cities decide whether or not they're going to implement the results of the study, generally speaking, when an organization decides to issue a request or proposal to have professional firms provide their credentials and the cost or fee to do this, they know they have a problem of some type. But they don't know the magnitude to what, what the problem is. So, with that said, I would say, for us, probably ninety-five to ninety-eight percent of our studies are implemented, even if we have to extend the implementation to two or three years, because the organization knows that if, in fact, the consultant validates what we're hearing from employees, that, you know, the pay schedule, the pay structure is not competitive with some of the jurisdictions that we can easily commute to, then you're going to lose some people, they're going to go. You know, and, and some occupations, if, if someone can get a dollar an hour increase, they're going to go if they don't have to relocate, just change the direction by which they drive to work. And, and, and so, I would say, yeah, generally when, uh, we see these things come out, the organization generally knows it has an issue, they just don't know to the extent, and they may not have the expertise in-house to actually figure that out, and, and so, we come in and do that.
Thank you for that. And then, is your work with us finished? Or if we decide to step implement this or however we might want to go about it, do you, are you still consulting or is this...
Yeah, two, two things. There may be some changes with some people leaving or going between now and July first. And so, I've already told Megan, just, just let us know what happens, and we'll update the documents. And then we also have a, a fee-for-service agreement, we call it a maintenance agreement. If, if you decide to create some new positions and you're not sure where they should go, then we certainly will be available to help with that. We did also provide some information if you wanted to do an organizational review and staffing analysis, where we go in each department, we see how it's organized, how it's staffed, whether or not it's too, too top-heavy, not enough leadership, too much leadership, not enough people in general, not very tech-savvy department, you could probably reduce the number of people that you'd have to hire if you went more into technology, assess the leadership, you know, we do those things as well.
Okay, thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
Mayor, if I could, oh, go ahead, Greg.
No, Greg.
Just to follow up on a remark you made, on the ninety-five to ninety-eight percent implementation, what percentage of those fully implement the study right off? As opposed to the steps?
Oh, piecemealing it? I, I, I would say about eighty-five.
Eighty-five, okay.
Yeah.
So, you would recommend that all a hundred percent implemented because you stand a chance of getting behind, is that correct?
That's correct, and, and I can give you a real-world example. I had a, a, a long-term client in Texas, two months ago, decided to piecemeal which departments they were going to give increases to and which jobs. He lost a, a, a number of key people in several departments, because the cherry-picking process pits different employees against each other, and, 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 and any wise leader would know that's a no-no. All or nothing. Mr. Stone?
Thank you, sir. I'm glad that you didn't include in longevity pay, and it's, it's spread out over twenty-one points, so I'm glad of that. Did you look at shift inferential pay?
We provided a, a policy and information on that, yes.
Okay, I'm glad to see that, because, you know, being a retired city employee and a retired police officer, shift inferential would be not only for police and fire, but that would be a lot. But how do you figure in lateral transfers? Because there's some departments that are paying sixty, eighty thousand dollars for lateral transfers.
I did provide some information showing that if you hire, for example, in police, if you hire an officer who's already certified working in another jurisdiction, and he or she wants to come here, you wouldn't expect them to start at the bottom, and they're already certified. And so, there's language in the policy that we've written so that you would know how to place them based on their experience.
Okay.
All right, any other questions? Go ahead.
I know tonight, you're going to present the budget to us, which I'm assuming we're, I know this will be the first time I've seen it, and, and I, I guess I'm kind of jumping ahead. So, we're going to, we're going to be asked to approve this compensation study. Is that correct or what, what is the flow moving forward, I guess?
So, there's kind of three pieces of approval that would be required of the council. The first would be adopting the mayor's budget, which will include implementation of the study as, as a recommendation under his budget. So, if that were to be approved, then a personnel ordinance would be approved, adopting that new pay scale, which is significantly more complex than our existing one, so that would be another point at which the council would need to approve. And then that last one is that policy piece, you know, Russell's referred a couple of times to a policy. So, part of the employee handbook would include, you would, you would pass a municipal order adopting those amended provisions that kind of dictate how this, how this pay schedule is administered. So, I'll give an example, if you have a police officer and then they promote to sergeant, they're moving to a different grade. If you put them to the beginning of that grade, they might be making less or incrementally more than they were as an officer, so that's not incentivizing promotion. So, we have to dictate that through those policies that say, if you promote, this is where you go, and this is how many steps you move, to make sure we're incentivizing promotion within departments, limiting that compression among ranks, et cetera. So, that, that policy will be that third really important piece that, like Russell said, he's made those recommendations for, for you to consider.
And a follow-up question based on that response would be, in the mayor's proposed budget, is any of this additional salary increase already included in the budget?
Yes.
All of it.
And I guess we're going to get to this, I want to ask one more additional question, and I guess we're going to probably, I might be jumping ahead of myself here. I know we have quite a few city employees that are here in the audience tonight. I know on the slide presentation, there was a figure of a four percent cost of living adjustment. Is that what is being proposed as a minimum? And then, so it's, it's going to be a four percent cost of living adjustment? Then there's going to be additional money or additional, additional percentage, I guess, between the steps?
The, the, the way we work this, in terms of calculating, is once we create the new structure, we look to see who's below the minimum or step one, then we get them to step one. Then we get them to step one. Then we apply the four percent so that we can address the salary compression issue. By doing it that way, no current employee come July one would be making less than four percent above step one. That way, the new hire would be four percent less at a minimum.
Right. Are there any other questions?
Mayor, are we going to be able to have a copy of this information emailed to us to kind of look over? Would that be...
Yeah, we can get that to you. Yeah, we'll get that to you, absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Dr. Campbell?
Yes, sir.
We appreciate you very much for coming and giving us this information, and take it to heart, and we appreciate your hard work.
I appreciate it.
And I'm sure we'll be contacting you soon.
Got some great employees, I trust that you'll take care of them.
Moving next, we go now have the council committee reports. I believe today, everybody's on the docket. So, I'm just going to draw a name out of the hat. And the lucky winner for today is police.
Sir, did I find it? There we go. On May sixth, we met, a meeting was called to order at nine AM. Minutes were approved. Chief Al, when overstaffing, Chief Allgood stated we had sixty-seven of seventy-one officers filled, and currently one non-certified candidate in the background process. Then we shifted to recruiting, and he was currently working with Georgetown College. Had one female from the women's basketball team interested, and the volleyball team, along with the police department, hosted a safe class and recruiting event with a good turnout. Body camera timeline was discussed. And offer was extended to hire the administrative position, that Lieutenant Mike Scott and Officer Don Mather would oversee the program until everything. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. And then, Captain Lodel said that the equipment is expected to be installed in June. There will be a bill being rotated through with the equipment installation. Starting in July, they will start wearing the cameras, and it'll be roughly a sixty-day training period for all the officers. So, it will be live, but they'll still be getting used to the new equipment. Junior Seacrest Police Academy class, the next one is class number three. It will be from June tenth until the fourteenth, from eight AM until two-thirty PM. And they would look to hold a class number four before school starts. New canine was discussed. Chief Allgood was contacted by Toyota. They are having issues with containers coming in with the seals broken on them. And this causes a lot of concern as to why it was broken, whether it was theft or customs was inspecting the containers or, you know, potentially some, something else, especially in the, in the world climate today. So, the police department will be applying for a grant to obtain a bomb detection dog. And the dog would be coming from the same canine company as all the other canines. And this dog would occasionally go out to Toyota and search unsealed containers to make sure there's... Retired SROs, we still have one position to fill. There was an officer that was hired for the SRO position at Garth Elementary, was Officer Jason Parkin. The guys in the back need to be a little worried. The police department has hired, has obtained a dunking booth for various community events. No, I'll tell you that now, no. So, they're looking for a lot of events to come up and take that and put it into place and be a real shot in the arm for the police department. Next thing was discussed was resident on South Broadway, Stephen Chris, contained, complained about the noise and disturbance that some of the vehicles are making, cars, trucks, and motorcycles, specifically with mufflers and, or lack thereof. Some of them are even from the factory, and they're really loud. So, Chief Allgood stated he would pass that on to Sergeant Perkins as well. Three commendations, this, two commendations, and Officer of the Month. Officer Anthony Foltz received a chief commendation for traffic stops seizing firearms and drugs. Todd Young received a chief commendation for crime-seeing work in building a strong, in helping build a stronger case for court. And the Officer of the Month for April was SRO Ben Martin. That's it.
Thank you. Public Works?
Yes, Mayor. We had our meeting on April the seventeenth, Wednesday, at eleven AM. We approved our minutes. Robert was talking to us about the standing water was found by the city risk managers officer, and he met with the contractor, Hamilton Hinkle, about bitumous paving. And the cost would be around thirty-two thousand, three hundred, and the money could be moved from the stock budget to complete this work. The stock budget is about a hundred and eleven thousand for the year, and fifty-five thousand remains in that budget. And if he can get the okay, he can schedule the white-top work before seven-one to use it before the fiscal year ends. So, I'm sure that's probably going to come before soon. The mayor and I believe that it's probably a good plan to do that. And I also mentioned reaching out to Judge Covington to look at paving together on Houston Way because he received a grant. I don't know if he had an opportunity to do that or not. So, anyway, Rural Springs Park, we've been talking about the cabins. GMWSS could remove this cabin that's really in disrepair and be part of their scope of work. Probably talk to them about that. And if Richmond wants the cabin, then they can move it by themselves, is what we talked about. Budget requests, this is really about their capital list, but the priority has to be need versus want. And Robert really needs a dump truck. So, hopefully, that'll be in the budget. Down the road, if there is a stormwater utility fee implemented, then there's some big items that that could pay for. General discussion, we talked about downtown light discussion with Lori, with tourism. The fire department would like to change the lights to red in memory of Norman Lytle. And the cost would be about three hundred dollars. But they would like to look at this, like, moving forward, like, for Memorial Day, putting flags up. It wouldn't cost a lot to do that, and it would beautify downtown. So, that was discussed as well. And it wouldn't be a lot of money. And then, Eddie was telling us that Eddie, our city engineer, said Main Street sidewalk grinding will begin after Memorial Day. And also, the Colony Interest, Entrance Improvements Project will begin after school is out. And we had a good traffic meeting as well prior to, and we've discussed that we need more traffic cops, for sure. And that's, the next meeting will be Wednesday, May the fifteenth, at two thousand and fourteenth, at the police department conference room. And we adjourned the meeting at eleven forty-two, that's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you. Finance?
I'm leaning, we had a couple of meetings.
Yes, we had, we've had a couple of meetings since the last council meeting. All due with the budget. I won't go into, we have the minutes, I won't go into the specific details. I don't want to steal Stacy's thunder and the mayor's thunder tonight. So, the, the April, let's see, April fifteenth, April fifteenth meeting, we talked about the general budget items, the comp study. Some of the investment discussions include the Stockyards portfolio and the City Hall draw. We also got into specifics on revenue projections, how they're going to be doing the next year over this year. And then, also some reductions from the original budget that we had, we had looked at previously. We then moved into the one-time capital expenditures. We will talk about those more in detail. Full council now has those. And then, some of the, some of those included the Lexus Way, as well as the Broadway Clayton Stormwater Project. And then, into some interlocal agreements, so, and that's it.
All right, last but not least, fire.
We had our most recent fire committee meeting on April twenty-fifth. I'll hit some of the high points, there's quite a bit of information. So, I'll just hit some of the high points. We currently have two open positions in our city fire department. We're anticipating an additional four firefighters, if I'm not mistaken, as I'm looking towards Megan, that are going to be retiring over the next several months. So, probably late July, early August timeframe, maybe sooner, could be a little later. We're going to have six, six openings in our fire department. And quite a bit of leadership and experience are part of the retirements. So, that's, that's going to make it challenging for Chief Thompson and his command staff. I know Megan, Devin, our city attorney, Mayor Jenkins, and Chief Thompson are working on a plan. I know they are, I know we're, I know we've got a proactive plan in place. So, I feel confident that the transition will be as smooth as possible. Another item that we discussed was cancer screening for active duty and also retirees within the fire department. I know that's something we, as a council, have discussed over the past several years. There is a Chief Thompson and his command staff, as well as Donna, have diligently worked to, with, I guess you want, maybe I'll call it a foundation. It's not city money to work towards funding for retirees to do cancer screenings. At this point, they have raised enough money to cover ninety-five percent of the costs for the twelve retired firefighters that are participating. That's, that's big. And that's something we need to really, hopefully, I won't be here, continue to push. Over the last thirty to forty days, it's, the fire department has been very busy. Chief Thompson, if, I think there's been, I know we, when we had our meeting, there had been three pretty significant fires at the time. There's been one additional fire at an apartment complex off of Champion Way since our last meeting. So, there's four significant fires. Plus, there was a really bad incident out on I-75 within the past thirty days that the fire department, as well as local law enforcement and EMA, were all involved in that. So, it's been, it's been a very busy past thirty to forty days for members of law enforcement and also our fire department. We talked about the two new fire engine, or trucks, that Chief Thompson, if I'm not mistaken, I think they were, I think we approved those back in twenty-twenty-two. And those fire trucks, due to supply chain issues, are still not here yet. But if, you know, fingers crossed, if all goes well, they should, both fire trucks, both new fire trucks should be here early to mid-two thousand and twenty-five. There's, continues to still be a significant backlog. And then, lastly, as I was coming in tonight, and I asked Chief Thompson, right before I sat down, I asked him if we got a new fire truck. Look, it's a design I haven't seen before. And he said, no, we restripped one of our fire trucks. So, when you see it, it's pretty impressive. So, it'd look brand-new, and it's not. That's all I have, Mayor.
Well, that's good, that way we can let him do the rest of it, save us some money, about a million bucks, okay? All right, thank you for those reports. At this time, I'm going to call Chase up for Georgetown Municipal Water Sewer, okay? And we have B, the first reading of the two thousand and twenty-four Series A Bond Anticipation Note Order. Sponsored by Connie Tackett and Willow Hamburg.
Mayor, Council, good evening. Our Bond Anticipation Note Number Two, which was issued in FY twenty-two for thirty-one and a half million dollars, with Truist Bank, is expiring on June first of two thousand and twenty-four. We'll need to replace that note with what we intend to be the last piece of interim financing. We intend to come back, the next time we come back, we'll be with permanent financing. We, we hope to do that as soon as the end of this calendar year. More likely, it'll be winter, spring of FY twenty-five, or calendar year twenty-five. But this is the last piece of interim financing. Baird, on our behalf, solicited bids for replacement of ban number two. We received four responsive bids. To take you through those responses, I believe you have a sheet in your pocket that shows the, the different respondents. But to take you through those bids and explain our recommendation for award, I'm going to turn it over to Chip Southern with Baird, so.
Thank you, Jeff. Good evening. Happy to answer any questions. I'll be really brief in the explanation that you have here. I'm excited to stand up, as I sat for a while. Four responsive bids, as Jeff said, Truist, Huntington Regions, and Republic Bank. Our recommendation to the, to the Water and Sewer Board was that they, they approved the, the offer from Truist Bank. It's a four-point-three-two percent interest rate, it's a one-year note. That's all the time that the, the system needs to be ready, hopefully, for permanent financing. And what we did do when we solicited the RFP, or we asked that the respondents allow for flexibility to allow the water and sewer system to prepay at no penalty after six months, with the idea, we're sort of taking a conservative approach that if possible, that the sewer system's in shape to come together with permanent financing and, and pay off all of its notes, then we want to strike when we can, as quickly as can. But realistically, that would be towards the end of the year. So, we have that option, that flexibility to do that. But also, this note ties us over till, you know, by June of next year. So, happy with the responses. There was one, there was one important other, one other important aspect to point out. Actually, Regions Bank had the lowest interest rate on a four-year note, and we did not recommend that approach strategically. The, as you all are aware, cash is very important for water and sewer systems when it comes to investment-grade ratings. Fortunately, it worked, you know, the city is highly rated, it's a double-A credit, very, very strong credit. Water and sewer systems, they're really key on how much cash you have. And during this time period, and while that four-point-two percent interest rate is lower, the tax law is such that we can't capitalize interest. And by capitalize interest, what we, what we're going to do is we're going to do a one-year note, and we're going to borrow not enough, we're going to borrow enough money to not only pay off the old Truist note, but also to pay the interest in December and, and at the end of the maturity. And what that allows this water and sewer system to do is to keep its cash so that when we get to the permanent financing, it stays cash on hand, is higher. And it was just a little bit of an expense, a four-point-three-two percent interest rate as opposed to four-point-two. I talked longer than I should.
All right. At this time, Madam Clerk, you're going to do the...
Do we have questions, or will that come after?
After, questions come after.
It doesn't matter, there's no, there's no vote.
You got a question?
Yeah, this, this note's paying off the ban too, correct?
Correct.
And you said something about some interest, can you explain that?
The interest on the, on the, the new note?
Yes.
It'll be at four-point-three-two percent?
No, you said that this is also paying off the interest on something else.
Oh, I think I was talking about capitalized interest. And the new note will have enough money to pay interest when the, when the payment on this new note comes due in December, and then, then the subsequent month, six months.
And just curious, sorry, was there any local financial institutions that submitted any requests?
It's a pretty, it's a sizable loan, candidly. So, we didn't expect to have any local responses to it. But we, we solicited. It was open to all, for sure.
We solicited locally, but got no responses, unfortunately.
All right. All right. At this time, Madam Clerk, if you read the first reading.
An ordinance of the city of Georgetown, Kentucky authorizing the issuance of its water and sewer revenue bond anticipation note 2024 Series A in an approximate aggregate principal amount of $35,790,000, which amount may be increased by up to $3,580,000 or decreased by any amount. To refund at maturity, the city's water and sewer bond anticipate note 2022 Series A in anticipation of the issuance of the city's water and sewer revenue bonds 2025 Series A designating the city as the paying agent and registrar for the 2022, 2024 Series A note, approving the form of the 2024 Series A note, approving the preparation of a request for proposals and other offering documents for the 2024 Series A note, authorizing designated officers of the city to execute and deliver the 2024 Series A note, authorizing and directing the filing of notice with the state local debt officer providing for the payment of and security for the 2024 Series A note, establishing a note redemption fund and a cost of issuance account for the 2024 Series A note, providing for the sale of the 2024 Series A note to the best bidder and repealing inconsistent ordinances. The ordinance authorizes the issuance by the city of a series of its water and sewer revenue bond anticipation notes in the approximate aggregate principal amount of $35,790,000, the 2024 Series A note, for the purposes of, one, fully refunding and retiring the outstanding amount of the city's water and sewer revenue bond anticipation note 2022 Series A dated June 28, 2022, at maturity in anticipation of the future issuance of the city's water and sewer revenue bonds 2025 Series A. Two, paying capitalized interest for the 2024 Series A note. And three, paying the cost of issuance of the 2024 Series A note. The ordinance also approves the execution and delivery by the city of a request for proposals and other offering documents for the sale of the 2024 Series A note. The 2024 Series A note is to be sold in private negotiated sale in accordance with the note. 2024 Series A note is to be sold, sorry, and the provisions of Chapter 424 of the Kentucky Revise Statutes or by the solicitation of proposals as required by law. The 2024 Series A note is to bear interest payable at a single rate per annum from its date of issuance to maturity as shall be established upon the sale of the 2024 Series A note. The interest rate applicable to the 2024 Series A note shall not exceed 10% per annum. Introduced in public for the first time, May 13, 2024.
All right.
Thank you.
Okay, next, we have the first reading of the 2025 Series A Bond Ordinance. Sponsors Connie Tackett and Willow Hamburg.
Good evening. My name's Mark Franklin. I'm bond counsel with Denzmore and Shoal. I just wanted to explain the reason for the bond ordinance. Some of you may recall with previous bans that the security that's being offered for the bond anticipation note by the city is the promise to issue bonds in the future, refund the note. And we do that right now because the, the water and sewer system, you know, to go to the full market and pledge its revenues, we're going to want a rate study and some other things that Chip and the team are working on for the, the full permanent financing next year. And so the market allows us and the bank has accepted basically the promise to issue permanent debt to take out the ban. And so as evidence of that good faith, we go ahead and adopt a bond ordinance now so that the bonds are authorized. That gives the bank assurance the city's taken the steps necessary to issue the permanent financing next year when, when the note matures. So it basically provides the, the bank comfort. In, in practical terms, we'll probably be back to amend the ordinance or to have a new ordinance to provide for refunding of all the bans when we're actually ready to go for the permanent financing. But this is a good faith step that gives the bank the comfort it needs to purchase the note.
Are there questions? Madam Clerk, you read the first reading, please.
An ordinance of the city of Georgetown, Kentucky authorizing the issuance of its water and sewer revenue bonds 2025 Series A in the approximate aggregate principal amount of $38 million, which amount may be increased by up to $38 million or decreased by any amount for the purpose of refunding its water and sewer revenue bond anticipation note 2024 Series A at or in advance of maturity. Designating a paying agent and a registrar for the 2025 Series A bonds, authorizing designated officers of the city to execute and deliver the 2025 Series A bonds and all related documents on behalf of the city, providing for the payment of and security for the 2025 Series A bonds, establishing a principal account, interest account and cost of issuance account for the 2025 Series A bonds. Approving the preparation of a preliminary official statement and final official statement for the 2025 Series A bonds, providing for the award of the 2025 Series A bonds to the lowest and best bidder. Approving the filing of a notice with the state local debt officer and repealing any inconsistent ordinances. The ordinance authorizes the issuance of a series of water and sewer revenue bonds by the city in the approximate aggregate principal amount of $38,800, $38,800,000, the 2025 Series A bond, for the purposes of, one, refunding the city's outstanding water and sewer revenue bond anticipation note 2024 Series A at or in advance of maturity, the proceeds of which fully refunded and retired the city's outstanding water and sewer revenue bond anticipation note 2022 Series A at maturity. Two, paying the cost of credit enhancement for the 2025 Series A bonds, if any. And three, paying the cost of issuance of the 2025 Series A bonds. The ordinance also approves, A, the preparation and distribution of preliminary official statement and final official statement for the 2025 Series A bonds. B, the official terms and conditions of bond sale for the 2025 Series A bonds. And C, the execution of a continuing disclosure agreement in connection with the 2025 Series A bonds. The 2025 Series A bonds are to be sold in advertised public sale in accordance with the provisions of Chapter 424 of the Kentucky Revise Statutes as required by law. The 2025 Series A bonds shall bear interest payable at a rate or rates from their date of issuance to their respective maturities as shall be established upon their sale. Introduced in public for the first time on May 13, 2024.
Thank you. Next, we're going to have the chief administrative officer. We're going to start with the second reading of the amendment to the alcohol ordinance. Sponsors are Mark Showalter and Connie Tackett.
An ordinance amending Chapter 4, Article 2, Division 1 of the Georgetown Code of Ordinances regarding alcoholic beverages. Whereas the city of Georgetown, through the city alcoholic beverage control administrator, may issue alcoholic beverage licenses and corresponding fees as established by the Kentucky General Assembly in KRS 243-070 as amended. And whereas the Georgetown City Council is permitted by state law to increase city license fees to match the maximum amounts specified in KRS 243-070 subsection 1, subject to the limitations set forth in KRS 243-070 subsection 5. And whereas the Georgetown City Council also desires to amend the list of city license types to match the corresponding state license currently authorized by law, now therefore be ordained by the city of Georgetown, Kentucky. Section 1, section 4-33 of the Code of Ordinances, city of Georgetown, Kentucky is hereby amended as follows. Section 4-333, established fees. For the privilege of causing permitting and engaging in the actions, business and transactions authorized thereby in regard to traffic and alcoholic beverages in the city and pursuant to the authority of KRS 243-070, there is hereby established a corresponding city license for each of the state licenses described in KRS 243-070. The fee for each city license shall be as set out in the following schedule. In the event KRS 243-070 shall thereafter be amended to authorize additional city licenses, the fee for each city license shall be the maximum fee provided in the statute as amended. One, distilled spirits and wine license fees. The following distilled spirits and wine licenses may be issued by the city, the fees for which shall be: Distillers license per annum, $500. Rectifiers license, class A, per annum, $3000. Rectifiers license, class B, craft rectifier per annum, $960. Wholesale distilled spirits and wine license per annum, $3000. Quota retail package license per annum, $630. Quota retail drink license per annum, $630, $630. Special temporary license per event, $160. Non quota type 1 retail drink license includes distilled spirits, wine and malt beverages, $2000. Non quota type 2 retail drink license includes distilled spirits, wine and malt beverages per annum, $840. Non quota type 3 retail drink licenses includes distilled spirits, wine and malt beverages, private clubs, per annum, $300. Special Sunday retail drink license per annum, $300. Special temporary alcoholic beverage auction license per event, $100. Bottling house or bottling house storage license per annum, $1000. Authorized public consumption license per annum, $250. Qualified historic site license per annum, $1,030. Two, malt beverage license fees. The following distilled spirits and wine licenses may be issued by the city, the fees for which shall be: Malt beverage license fees, brewer's license per annum, $500. Microbrewery license per annum, $500. Malt beverage distributor's license per annum, $400. Non quota retail malt beverage package license per annum, $200. Non quota type 4 retail malt beverage drink license per annum, $200. B, the fee for each of the first five supplemental bar licenses shall be the same as the fee for the primary drink license. There shall be no charge for each supplemental license issued in excess of five to the same licensee at the same premises. C, the holder of a non quota retail malt beverage package license may obtain a non quota type 4 malt beverage drink license for a fee of $50. The holder of a non quota type 4 malt beverage drink license may obtain a non quota retail malt beverage package license for a fee of $50. Three. Sorry, four. Other license fees, the following kinds of other licenses may be issued by the city, the fees for which shall be: Other license fees, extended hour supplemental license per annum, $2000. Caterers license per annum, $800. Limited restaurant license or limited golf course license per annum, $840. Section 2, if any section, subsection, paragraph, sentence, clause, phrase or a portion of this ordinance is declared illegal or unconstitutional or otherwise invalid, such declaration shall not affect the remaining portion hereof. Section 3, all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict with this ordinance are hereby repealed. Section 4, this ordinance shall be in full force and effect upon passage and publication. Publicly introduced and read for the first time, April 22, 2024. Publicly read the second time, May 13, 2024. Motion, Mayor.
Okay. Have a motion made by Ms. Tackett. Do you have a second?
I'll second.
Second. Ms. Brent, are there further questions and or comments? At this time, Madam Clerk, we have roll call.
Mrs. Tackett? Yes. Mr. Stone?
Yes.
Mr. Showalter?
Yes.
Mr. Hampton?
Yes.
Mrs. Hamburg? Mrs. Butcher-Comway?
Yes.
Mrs. Wilkins-Brent?
Yes.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Let the record reflect that the motion passed. Next, we're going to have the first reading of the zoning map amendment, 944 East Main Street. Sponsors.